It's six o'clock, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. My name is Steven Brooks, and I'm the Wetlands Section Project Manager in the Department of Health and Environmental Control, Office of Ocean and Coastal Resource Management. The Office of Ocean and Coastal Resource Management has a general charge to protect the quality of the coastal environment and to promote the economic and social improvement of the coastal zone. This mandate includes the wise management of coastal resources through the review of projects that propose impacts to those resources, including tidal and freshwater wetlands in eight coastal counties through the Coastal Zone Management Act, the department's critical area regulations, and the coastal consistency certification review. The critical area permitting responsibility of DEHEC is the basis for the public hearing tonight, and our review is initiated upon receipt of the project application, which was placed on public notice. The public notice is the document that most of you received. This public notice advertised that the city of Isle of Palms is proposing to increase the number of sand scraping events from two to four over the life of the permit, and to change the expiration date of the permit to coincide with the Department of Army permit, which is March 31, 2017. Additionally, the public notice includes a request to excavate sand from existing dry beach areas in two locations other than the shoal bar area that was specifically denoted in the drawings of the original permit. These proposed activities are located on and adjacent to the Atlantic Ocean at a location limited to the area between 53rd Avenue and the existing groin near the 17th tee of the Lynx Golf Course on the northeastern end of Isle of Palms, Charleston County, South Carolina. The permit would be limited to the same total volume of sand allowed to be scraped and transferred over the life of the permit, which is a maximum of 500,000 cubic yards, and would also be limited to the same maximum allowable volume of sand scraped during any one event, which is 250,000 cubic yards. However, any one event can also be less than the maximum of 250,000 cubic yards. It is the responsibility of the department to accept applications and review them in an unbiased manner as the staff is charged with interpreting state law and regulations. No decision will be made until such time as the file is administratively complete and until all necessary facts have been gathered. In that regard, this hearing is designed to gather comments as of the merits of the project, then consider all information when making a decision based on the Coastal Zone Management Act, department regulations, and policies. The specific regulations that will be reviewed for this project will be R-30-11B and C, which are standards that apply to all projects, and R-30-13N2, which is the regulation specific to this project. Additionally, staff will base the decision upon applicable policies in the Coastal Zone Management Plan. For your reference, there are copies of the regulations and the public notice at the signing table. All persons wishing to make a statement must complete a small slip of paper found at the signing table like this, and when you are called upon, please step to this microphone. The only remarks allowed will be from the person called to speak, and each speaker will have five minutes. I would advise those who plan to speak to limit your comments to the project at hand, which includes increasing the number of sand scraping events from two to four over the life of the permit, changing the expiration date to coincide with the Department Army permit, which is March 31, 2017, and excavating sand from existing dry beach areas other than the shoal bar area that was specifically denoted in the drawings of the original permit. Please remember that the purpose of this hearing is to allow interested parties to make a statement for the record, which will be reviewed by OCRM staff prior to a decision. For the sake of accuracy, important facts should be submitted in writing. Written comments will be received tonight, and the record will remain open until March 27, 2013. Please mail any comments to myself, Steve Brooks, at 1362 MacMillan Avenue, Suite 400, Charleston, South Carolina 29405. To make certain we gather all presented information, we will not have direct questioning during the hearing. However, OCRM staff will remain after the close of the hearing to answer any questions you may have after all the speakers have had an opportunity to comment on the proposed project. Before we start receiving comments and remarks from those who have signed up, we will hear a brief presentation from the applicant and their consultant about the proposed project. At this time, I will turn it over to the applicant for their presentation.
Do I need to be at the mic too, or can I just speak louder?
You can speak.
If you can't hear me anytime, please just yell at me and I'll speak louder. I'm Steven Trainum. I work with Coastal Science and Engineering, and we've been working with the city of Isle of Palms since 2007. We first started formulating the nourishment plan for the 2008 nourishment project, and forgive me when I knocked everything over by stepping on the floor here. I'm gonna try to keep this as brief as possible, but go over some very relevant information of monitoring studies that we've done, starting back in the 80s, but really focusing on the time period from 2007 to 2012. This is a model of Isle of Palms, and it's a barrier island drumstick model. Drumstick being the shape, kinda looks like a chicken leg, and the reason that happens is because sand breaks off the Dewey's inlet delta and migrates on shore, adding sand to Isle of Palms and building out the beach seaward. Most of y'all have probably seen this before, and probably seen a lot of these slides before, but bear with me. The thing that causes a significant change at Isle of Palms, and especially in the northeast end, is the sand that's breaking off the inlet and moving onto the beach, and we call those shoal bypass events. In South Carolina, the inlets are ebb dominant, meaning that currents kinda carry the sand seaward from the inlet, and then waves kinda push that sand back towards the beaches, and there's a balance that kinda shapes our coast. So periodically, these little packages of sand kinda break off the delta and migrate on shore, and if you've been here long enough, you've seen that happen. 2007 was a very large event that attached to the beach, and that led to some very focused erosion right next to it. So while they're adding sand, that can cause some pretty significant erosion. And we have three stages that we refer to these in. The first stage is stage one, and that's when the shoal is kinda pretty well offshore. It's just starting to impact the beach. Basically, that's acting like a rock breakwater offshore. It's breaking the waves, so there's no wave energy behind the shoal. So on the beach, since there's no wave energy, sand falls out, and it stops moving. So what happens is the beach behind it starts building out, and that sand's coming from the adjacent areas on either side of the shoal. In stage two, it's just about to attach to the beach. A lot of times, you kinda have a horseshoe-shaped bar and some very severe erosion on either side of it. Stage three, the sand actually attaches to the beach, and that sand that used to be offshore is now part of the beach, and it spreads out and is natural erosion. So this was a model that was done from an event in the 80s, and here's a similar event in the late 90s. 1996, you see this sand bar that's broken off of the delta that's migrating on shore. This beach behind it spills out of salient. And so our current situation is this is just about to start occurring at Shipwatch Villas. We're seeing signs of it, but this sand bar isn't exposed offshore yet. It's still kinda under the breakers, and the salient's not near as big. We're just starting to see, measure that in the profiles. Here in 1997, the stage two, the salient's actually built out to the shoal. The shoal's moved further inland, but it's still not attached on the side, so you're still getting some pretty severe erosion on the adjacent sides, but now you can get out of this sand bar. And you can actually see, if you look right there, there's some marks in that sand bar. That's where they're excavating sand, very similar to what we're trying to do here. 1998, the shoal's completely merged with the beach now. You see where it was eroded, and now this big sand bar's come on shore, and this area's been restored as well. That's from this natural sand moving on shore and then manipulating it. This is the ideal scenario, is when this sand bar becomes accessible to land-based equipment, you can get out there and kinda speed nature along and redistribute that sand. Since 2007, this is the situation we've had. In 2007, this is the large shoal event that kinda facilitated the need for the 2008 projects. Very severe erosion along the northeast end of Isle of Palms, all the way from kinda Shipwatch area down to the end of the golf course. In March 2009, here, the nourishment, you can see this kinda light sand that's built out. That was the nourishment sand there. We have another shoal that's come on shore in 2009. That migrated on. In 2010, there was another shoal that migrated on. Here in July 2011, on the bottom, and a lot of people probably can't see that, but there's no shoal directly on shore. What happened over that time is in 2007, the main channel of Dewey's inlet kinda came out parallel to the beach and then broke seaward right near where that shoal's coming out. Well, that closed off, and a new channel formed kinda going straight out of Dewey's inlet, which I'll show you in a minute. So that's a very, very large-scale event that isn't a normal part of the shoal bypass cycle. This is what we call a channel expulsion event. So it's caused a break in the normal progression of shoals breaking off and coming offshore is this very large quantity of sand that is now slowly moving this way on shore, and we'll look at that here in a minute. Also wanna go way back in science to 1949, and this is Isle of Palms before it was developed. And you see this big bar that's formed out here, and actually, this is a lagoon that's just open to the ocean by this little thing. This is a natural shoal bypass event, but a very large-scale event, and it wraps all the way into the Dewey's inlet shoreline and extends a long way down the island. This is very important, and this is why we wanna have the flexibility with this permit that we have, is because we can't predict exactly, you know, four years from now where a shoal might attach. It might attach close to Wild Dunes Grand Pavilion. It might attach all the way up to the golf course. We don't know for sure. We're monitoring it, and we have an idea a couple of years from now, which we'll see in a minute. But events like this do happen. We see these all over the place. You see them at Kiwa Island, events even larger than this. Similar things have happened at Crip Island. A large event happened like this that decided to build out on all this land, and then all that temporary sand kinda spread out, and now you have a rockfall on Crip Island. Very dynamic, very rapid. Sometimes you can throw a beach over 100 feet in a year. Sometimes it rises 100 feet. And that's what's very critical for us, to have the flexibility to manage this shoal. Now, a lot of you have probably seen this before. This is our famous animation that we've collected, surveys. This is actually real data that we've collected and produced a color model. So the areas of the red are kinda high shelves. This is that shoal near off of Dewey's Island. The orange is the part that you can actually see. It's the aerial. This is gonna play a loop. If you kinda notice this area, this is the big shoal that's coming on shore now. Between 2007, when it was on the other side of the inlet, and present day, now the inlet's coming out here, and that shoal sand's moving on shore. So we'll kinda track a couple of things here for now. So this is the main channel in 2007. You see it get pinched off by this shoal that's moving across all this sand, and a new channel's forming that's kinda going straight out of the inlet. And now we're seeing this channel's actually starting to already migrate back south again. So this is a cycle. It's gonna happen. But we see that, here's a shoal that's coming on in 2010 and 2009. We'll see another one. So all this sand now that used to be out here on the delta is pushing on shore. So what we currently have here in 2012, and I'll probably be able to pause it on there So 2012, July 2012, we have our inlet that's coming straight out here. This is a very large chunk of sand that's migrating on shore. This is what's currently off of Shipwatch and Mariners Walk Villas, and this is what's gonna attach and cause some very significant changes over the next year. You also have this sand as part of that leftover delta from the open that's migrating on shore as well. So you can see breakers all the way down towards the Wild Dunes Grand Pavilion. That's also migrating on shore. But that causes two different problems for this area near the golf course. One is, as this sand's offshore, it has that breakwater effect, and you're gonna get focused erosion adjacent to it. This southern side might be a little bit better off because it's got sand out here that's kinda protecting it as well. The other issue is this break in the bar out here, where it's deeper, is allowing waves to kinda focus right here around the golf course. So as waves come in here, they tend to spread out, and that causes this focused erosion right there behind the break in the shoal. So some more data showing how the sand's moving around. This is if you were standing at Shipwatch Villas right here and then start walking offshore. This is your dry beach, and then moving down to the wet beach in this area, zero is about sea level. And then you have about 1,200 feet before you get to where that sand bar is. In July 2012, this black line. In 2011, it was 600 feet further offshore. So it's coming on shore at a rate of about 600 feet per year. If you go out there now, it's probably closer to 600 feet from shore. This data was from July, so it's moved a lot since then, especially with hurricane sand coming through. So if this moves closer to shore, it's also gonna get higher in elevation, and soon it'll be exposed at low tide. You'll start seeing sand at low tide, and that's gonna increase that breakwater effect, so the beach behind it's gonna build out. And you can actually see that happening in this slide that I'll show here in a little bit. So this is looking at the same thing, but from an aerial view. The channel used to come right through here and then out this way. That used to be about 12 to 15 feet deep, and now you see it's all breakers and very shallow. It might be 5 feet deep. This is the main body of the shoal that's coming on shore right off of Mariners Walk and Shipwatch. Like I said, it was about 1,200 feet from the shore in 2012. It's gonna be much less than that now, and within the next year, it might attach. It might be very close to attaching, but you're really gonna see the effects on the beach. And then these are the breakers from the old delta low, and all that's slowly moving in as well. So this just all kinda highlights the very dynamic nature of the shoal. So this is the permit drawing that we had for the permit modification. When we show this, we say that these are potential bar areas under the December 2012 conditions. Here, we did a project in early 2012, and that just used sand from the area near Beach Club Villas, about right here, down to near Summer House. So the bar area was a little bit further out. That was using sand that was kinda left over from those earlier shoal attachment events. In December 2012, there wasn't enough sand there to do a large-scale event or to do another event and actually make it worthwhile. The last project moved about 87,000 cubic yards of sand, and there was probably 30,000 to 40,000 cubic yards of sand in December 2012. Not really enough to do something that, you know, will last much time. So we did a survey in December 2012. There was a little bit more sand there than up to about 70,000 cubic yards. And then we also added this area over near the point. Now, we showed this in the permit condition, but the present permit, the wording in the permit allows for sand, the work area is anywhere between 53rd Avenue and the groin there at the 17th tee. And we did that, understanding that we weren't gonna know exactly where these shoals were gonna come on shore and what the beach condition was gonna be like when work needed to be done. So we wanted that flexibility, and that was a critical part of this. If we tried to say, alright, this is gonna be our bar area, knowing that in four years from now, we don't know where that sand is exactly gonna come ashore at and what shape and what configuration. So we needed to have that flexibility. So in the original permit, we showed an area where we were anticipating borrowing sand the first time, but the wording in the permit was flexible, so it allowed work to be done anywhere between 53rd Avenue and the 17th tee. So we're not proposing to change that with this permit. We're using the condition of the beach at the time that work is needed to justify where we wanna, where's the best place to get the sand from. Now, if you go out there today, since that shoal's coming closer on shore, this area is actually building out at a fairly significant rate just from visual observations. Now, we need to kinda do another survey to see how much sand might actually be available there, but I would guess it's a pretty good amount more than what was there in December. This area I'm gonna highlight in the next series of slides to kinda show you how that area, why we selected that area to include in that December 2012 condition. If you've seen our monitoring reports, Reach 7, that's the Dewey's inlet shoreline. It goes from the dock leg and the 18th hole all the way to Cedar Creek Spit. This shows you the volume of sand that's within one foot of beach width. So if you're standing looking out at the ocean, you can measure off one foot of beach width. That's how much sand is in that foot of beach width out to where sand kinda stops moving around. So before the project, it was down here around 190. After nourishment, it jumped up to about 205. And then since nourishment, it's bumped up a little decrease, and it's continued to increase in sand. So that area's gained sand. This is since nourishment, without doing any kind of work. This is what it looks like before nourishment in March 2008. If you add up all the sand that's there now, it's gained about 90,000 cubic yards of sand. The design for the nourishment was about 25,000 cubic yards. You actually got a lot of free sand there because the dredges were kinda overpumped a little bit, but then the additional secretion has been about 50,000 cubic yards, just within that first about 800 feet from the kinda turning the inlet, moving inland a little bit. So it's been consistently gaining very large quantity of sand. And this is another way to show it. This is Station 330, which I can show you here. Station 330 is this red dot running out this way. Okay, so this is the 2007 condition. The red line is what it looked like just before nourishment. The blue line is what it looked like just like after nourishment. And this station actually didn't, wasn't part of the nourishment project. It started at 100 feet into the inlet. But the black line is where it was in July 2012. This moved up over 100 feet without any kind of work since the nourishment project. And all this sand under the water here, and this is mean sea level here at zero, so this is 10 and 15 feet underwater. There's a huge volume of sand that's actually underwater kinda ended the inlet. It's been transported there since the nourishment. Similar thing here is Station 344. This is near the 17th hole, 400 feet inland of where 330 is. 334 is right here. This area that's kinda on the right side of that red line, that would be the bar area that we're showing in the drawings, just to kinda give you a reference. So 344 is at the very northern end of that. It's also grown out, you know, near 100 feet since the nourishment project. So everywhere where we're proposing to borrow the sand is actually gaining sand since the nourishment project, and it's not actually taking any sand that was there right after nourishment. It's all new sand that's been generated or accumulated after nourishment. Here's what it looked like in September 2007, and I'm really gonna try to run through here. You see the very eroded state, the golf course here. It actually got much worse than that before the nourishment project was done in 2008. It was back in the Park Path. Here's what it looked like in March 2009. This is not quite a year after nourishment. All this bright sand here wasn't part of the nourishment fill. It's sand that moved in there after nourishment from this area. And you see it's building out, and then here in July 2011, you see a dry farm here. The nourishment, you can kinda see, starts right there and comes out and then back. So that's nourishment sand. This is all sand that's come into the area since nourishment, and that is where the bar area is shown on the plan. And an important part of this is we established a 400-foot bumper as part of this plan. The most critical part of this plan was that we didn't wanna leave any properties in jeopardy. That includes anywhere along Dewey's inlet and also anywhere south of Beach Club Villas and the, all the way down there. We did some, we looked at the data and see, to see, you know, how fast would the beach erode during different shoal bypass events, or if it was one of the most erosional areas, how fast it erode. So we came up with a 400-foot buffer being sufficient that if we didn't borrow any sand within that 400-foot buffer, so no closer than 400 feet from the buildings, that leaves plenty of protection for any of those structures. We don't wanna take sand from somewhere and cause that problem, that area to have problems in the future. We wanna make sure that everybody has plenty of protection.
Is it fair to ask an informational question?
Well, I think we're gonna hold off on questions until after the public hearing is closed.
I'll stick around here. So anyway, this red line is that 400-foot buffer, so no sand would be borrowed anywhere close to that 400-foot buffer, which is from this black line here of the Seabridge Golf Course. Similarly, over at Shipwatch, this is that beach built up behind the breakwater, the shoal that I mentioned. You can see that since the project, the berm hasn't really moved at all. That's the crest of the berm right here, been very stable. But here underwater, here's sea level, so this is your low tide where the water line is. That's been building out over the past two years. That's evidence that shoal's coming on shore and it's starting to really impact the beach, so that area we're expecting to really start increasing. And that's despite that area being part of the bar area in 2012 for that project. So even though we removed sand, it's still growing out. So summing up here, this strategy of kinda manipulating these shoals and manipulating the beach as these shoals are coming on shore, that's part of the Isle of Palms Long-Term Beach Management Plan. They had a couple of goals, which was to create a dry sand beach at all stages of the tide, eliminate the chronic erosion problems, minimize the need for emergency protection, so no more sandbags, you know, part of the goal here, avoiding past mistakes, and having everybody kinda cooperate on this. They also identified that the threat of erosion was the most significant beach management issue, and that threat was due to these shoal attachment events. So the advisory committee to the city recommended that either one, you do offshore dredging, which involves a very significant cost, and you also manage these shoals as they're attaching. So that's part of the state-adopted Long-Term Beach Management Plan for the city of Isle of Palms. So just to sum up the modification, the existing permit allows work anywhere between 53rd Avenue and the 17th tee, as long as we stick with that 400-foot bumper. The current permit allows two events. Each one could be up to 250,000 yards. The first event was 87,000 yards. We haven't done the second event yet. Total volume was 500,000 cubic yards. You have to do it in the winter. It involves some post-project monitoring, and expires in February 2017 according to the, from my understanding, there's some state regulation that extends all OCRM permits that were issued before December 31st, 2012, five years. So I don't think the permit expiration date is actually a critical aspect. The modification would be everything except the same, except it would allow a total of four events instead of two, but would not increase the total volume. So we're not asking for four events of 250,000 yards per total of 1 million yards. We're just asking for a total of four events totaling 500,000 cubic yards. So we're not trying to increase the volume. And I believe that's in my, wait, answer the last question.
Thank you for your presentation. I would also like to take this moment to recognize any elected officials.
We have a number. Adelina Tucker, City Administrator. There are a number of Isle of Palms council members in here, and I'm gonna ask them to each stand and state their names, starting with Councilwoman McCann.
Ryan Ughin. Can I call this City Council? Jimmy Carroll.
Sandy Stone.
Hello, I'm Dick Cronin. I just arrived. I'm sorry I'm late, but I think I heard you.
Okay, alright. Thank you very much. Would any of you like to speak? Okay, alright. Alright, well, we'll move on then to the folks that filled out slips to speak. But before we do that, I just wanted to just point out some of the OCRM staff that are here assisting with the public hearing. We have here today Bill Iser. He's in the back. A lot of you already know him. We also have Jeff Thompson. He's outside working the table. And we also have Lynette Thomas, our administrative assistant. She's standing over there in the corner. And of course, you all know me. So we will start with the speakers, and we'll start with the first one. That will be Dave Konoski.
Thank you, Steven. I'm the Chief Operating Officer of the Wild Dunes Community Association. The community association and its Board of Directors represent over 2,100 properties and over 3,300 property owners on the Isle of Palms. In 2008, Wild Dunes owners overwhelmingly supported the city's re-nourishment project and contributed $3 million towards the project. Our homeowners have a vested interest in preserving the restored beach on the northeast end of the Isle of Palms. The community association also supported the city's 2010 application to periodically move sand on the beach and supports its current request to align the expiration dates of the core permit and the OCRM permit to have a joint expiration in 2017. Since this was a joint application, administratively, this is really the right thing to do. Since this was a joint application, administratively, this is really the right thing to do. The association also strongly supports increasing the number of sand redistributions under the permit from two to four, as requested by the city of Isle of Palms. Since the early 1980s, the history of shoal bypassing, which brings that nourishment sand onto the beach but also causes focused erosion, has been well documented by the coastal scientists. Experience shows that using sand redistribution as a management strategy to preserve the beach requires flexibility as the sand shoals come ashore. We encourage OCRM and the Corps of Engineers to provide flexibility to the city of Isle of Palms to address the temporary focused erosion problems in front of the Wild Dunes community. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Larry Weiner. The pass, okay. Our next speaker is Beth Colley.
Pass.
Our next speaker is Rob Young.
This is going to be tough in five minutes. I've been asked to represent the Ocean Point Community Association this evening. Our primary area of concern is the borrow area that was identified along the Dewey's inlet shoreline. And let me try and explain why we have some concern about that.
Excuse me, would you come up here?
All I need to change the...
Oh, also, I'm sorry.
Is that all right? Right. Personally, I'm concerned about the original permit as it is. And we'll hear a little bit from another one of our speakers later about the position that DNR has taken on moving sand around on the beach. It doesn't add any additional sand to the system, it's environmentally damaging, and it creates a nuisance when dump trucks are running up and down the beach. If I were a Wild Dunes property owner, I would be concerned about developing a dump truck season in February or March, if you have to do this annually. And that's what increasing the number of events will do. Since the first installment of sand lasted less than a year, basically, you'd be agreeing to have an annual event, which is your dump truck on the beach event. The modification was required because these areas were too narrow to move the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand cubic yards of sand per event, so we need more events. Interestingly enough, the modification request says that this is also necessary to protect some of the dunes in one portion of the area that needs fill. And because the coming shoal attachment is a little bit larger than on average, and we heard that very nicely explained by the applicant a little bit earlier, the problem is that the borrow area along the Dewey's inlet shoreline suffered severe erosion during the last major shoal attachment event. So you're basically planning to take sand from an area that we heard earlier is going to experience severe erosion. And that's the Dewey's inlet shoreline from the Eighteenth Hole all the way down that shoreline. These slides are what it looked like in 2007. It wasn't just the Eighteenth Hole that experienced erosion, it went all the way down the Seventeenth fairway, and, I'm not going to try and jump over that, but the beach there became very narrow and approached the seagrass boardwalk, it was very close to the pool at Ocean Point. So it seems to me to be unreasonable to plan to take a large amount of sand, even if most of it is underwater, from an area that you're expecting within the next year to have severe erosion. So, you know, and we heard very conclusively that we're expecting that along that particular shoreline. The second problem we have with this particular borrow area is that, this is pictures from yesterday, you can see the high tide line here. This is the high tide line. The reason this has gained so much sand, a lot of it, is because we have incipient dunes forming. The sand is also going up out here. So this is all vegetated dune now, and it wasn't two years ago, but it is now. So you remove sand in front of this area, and basically you're condemning these dunes. So it seems somewhat ironic to me that we're, in the modification request, there is language talking about we need to move the sand around to protect some dunes in some other, some areas, when we're clearly going to be sacrificing some dunes in other areas. So, you know, I think you definitely need to keep in mind that when you play this sort of Russian roulette with moving sand around on the beach, you are increasing the risk for other property owners. There will clearly be a loss of what is now vegetated dune along the Dewey's Island shoreline. And to tie this back to the modification request, this increase, this risk goes up the more times you're allowed to take that sand. And we also heard that, you know, as the shoal attachment proceeds, the areas that are in the erosion shadow of that shoal are the places that we're clearly concerned about. And one of the target borrow areas is in that area of concern for increased erosion. You know, finally, you know, my clients are a little bit confused because, you know, they feel that, you know, they are being penalized to some extent for choosing to buy property that's well back from the shore. And because their beach happens to be wide and accreting, it makes them a target for moving sand around. And so, you know, in summary, I think that from a scientific perspective, it doesn't make sense to borrow sand from areas that are likely to be experiencing increased erosion because of the shoal attachment to solve erosion problems that are going to be generated by the shoal attachment. So I'm, again, I'm restricting my comments primarily to areas along the Dewey's inlet shoreline. And so we're concerned that adding additional events to this will place that area at risk. And we wish that we had had a chance to comment in a little bit more detail with the original permit, but we didn't do that.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Corley.
Good afternoon, my name is Michael Corley. I'm with the South Carolina Environmental Law Project, and I'm here today offering comments on behalf of Ocean Point Property Owners Association. As we, as has been discussed already, I think we all know that there was initially a permit in 2011 that was granted for sand scraping, and this is a request to modify that permit. I'd like to start by just reading a couple of quotes from that 2011 permit. And first, first thing that the permit says is, is it is the applicant's Isle of Palms' goal to perform sand redistribution as infrequently as practicable, so as to leave the project area undisturbed as long as possible between events. And then following that up, it says that it is the applicant's, again, Isle of Palms' preference to do fewer large-scale transfers rather than a series of small annual events. And if you'll note that in that 2011, in 2011, the Isle of Palms touted that its 2011 plan would minimize disruption to the beach, particularly in terms of the time and frequency that these scraping events were taking place. And of course, now we're, well, of course, Isle of Palms, when they made that submission, they benefited from it and played a part in their being granted that 2011 permit to begin with. And now we're here because Isle of Palms has reversed course and now seeks to go back and actually increase that disruption to the beach, more scrapings, wider borrow areas. Putting this thing in the most basic terms, this modification request simply goes too far. And what I mean by that is it goes too far in the burden it asks Ocean Point and other property owners and beach users in the area to bear, all for the benefit of a few others. Further, it goes too far in extending the impacts of this project further into the fragile dynamic Dewey's inlet, particularly at borrow area B, which you've heard some discussion of to this point. Now, this is, this is particularly true in light of the fact that Isle of Palms itself has identified some feasible alternatives with fewer environmental and social costs. And what I'm referring to there is off-site sand. We were all, had an opportunity to get the public notice for the 2013 public notice when we were coming in today. And if you look at that, if you look at that public notice, it says that a permit modification is the applicant's preferred alternative compared to the additional alternative of adding upland sand. And with all due respect, there's, there's important interests at stake here, apart from the city's interest and the city's preferred alternative. Now, other sources of sand are available here, upland sand, off-site sand, and the city should not be allowed to press the burden from this project onto everyone but itself by choosing the easiest and cheapest preferred alternative for relocating the sand. Now, you heard a little bit of forecasting of this argument, but my law firm is recently involved in an inlet relocation project on Seabrook Island. And part of that project was initially a sand scraping and transport that's comparable to what's proposed here. Now, when that was proposed, DNR filed objections to that, and that portion of the project was actually withdrawn. I have an excerpt from Susan Davis of DNR, who was deposed in this case, I'd like to pass it to you if I can, but she expresses DNR's objection to this type of project. And what she, what she says is that, you know, DNR has opposition to these nearshore active borrow areas, as they're going to be utilized in this case, because it doesn't add sand to the system, it doesn't add to the sand budget for the area. In other words, we're talking about, what we're talking about here is moving sand around within the same small confined area. No new sand is added to the system, and we're shifting the problem from one area to the other, not solving the problem. This position is held by DNR and some other agencies, is even further ways in favor of the, of utilizing an alternative sand source in this instance. Now, finally, the 2011 permit that I've referenced, that's not the first time that Isle of Palms has proposed sand scraping and borrowing adjacent to Dewey's inlet. Back in 2007, Isle of Palms actually sought to scrape up one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand cubic feet from an area known as Cedar Creek Spit, which is also an area that's adjacent to Dewey's inlet. They requested to scrape from that area to DEHAC, and DEHAC granted the permit but actually rejected use of the inlet area as a scrape slash borrow area. And in a permit decision, I have the 2007 permit here as well, thank you. DEHAC required use of off-site, an off-site upland borrow source. In other words, they required that sand be added to the system rather than sand be shifted around from one part of the system to another. Just, just to sum up, looking at the additional harm that's going to come to Ocean Point and some other property owners from this proposed modification, looking at the science behind these types of projects, as we've already heard about, and is reflected in DNR's position that I've mentioned, and then finally looking at DEHAC's own permitting history for requiring off-site borrow areas for this type of project in the Dewey's inlet area. There's plenty of reasons why this requested modification should be flatly denied, but certainly there are reasons why it should be rejected when it calls for the expansion of scraping into borrow area B within Dewey's inlet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corley. Our next speaker is Jack Smith.
Thank you, Steve. I'll make a few comments, but I also have a written comment for you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight to the agency on this permit modification. I think it's important to note that the Isle of Palms at this end is well-developed, a well-known international resort, frankly. And what we're looking at is episodic erosion that's going to continue to occur regardless of this permit decision. Instead of sandbags strewn about the beach, instead of trying to bring in sand that is from an off-site source, using what's here and kind of mimicking nature is really the best solved solution for interim measure between large-scale re-nourishment projects, such as the Isle of Palms engaged in previously, which Wild Dunes, which I represent, Wild Dunes Resort, actually helped participate in financially. My name is Jack Smith, I'm with Nelson Mullins Law Firm, I live in Mount Pleasant, 747 Old Central Way, I'll put that down for you. The only property owner that could be affected in the borrow area that's complained of by the Ocean Point owners is the golf course owner, which is Wild Dunes. There is a big buffer of that golf course between anything that could possibly occur. Wild Dunes is very appreciative of the very careful, methodical approach taken by coastal science engineering on behalf of the city to allow a four-hundred-foot buffer to prevent all that sand that was part, that came around the bend from the re-nourishment projects in the past, and has built up those dunes. Those fragile ecosystem of dunes that are so, of so concern weren't there in 2007. They have all built up from re-nourishment projects and from natural accretion. In the four-hundred-foot buffer, they will stay there. If we get erosion from another well-done event in the future, they are at risk. They were at risk in the past, and they'll be at risk in the future. The science here is to only use as much sand as necessary to protect the well-developed shoreline where the most direct effects of this accretion event, this episodic erosion, is occurring, while making sure that everybody else does have their protection as they would have had. I believe that this is a well-reasoned approach. The Wild Dunes Resort fully supports the amendment. We think flexibility is a key, rather than making, while we have to take all of that extra sand now, we can take part of it and manage this accretion system with the episodic erosion problems we have in a more, a smaller bites, and not have to do it all at once, which could put perhaps something at more risk than if we had to live with the current permit. We appreciate the opportunity to speak and would hope that the agency will look at and balance the property owner most at risk here, asking that this permit amendment be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Our next speaker is Lou Tisdale.
My name is Lou Tisdale. I do not have any comments. I do, however, have three questions I would like answered sometime tonight. Question number one, for the city of Isle of Palms, my question pertains to the section of beach between Beach Club Villas and Fifty-third Avenue, and it is addressed to city administrator Linda Tucker. Why is this section of beach a part of the permit? The beach has a healthy, dry, sandy beach between the high-tide mark and private property that is evident to anybody who walks this section of beach. Question number two, also to Ms. Tucker, does the city of Isle of Palms want to utilize permitting number 2010-104121G for any purpose other than erosion control? Question number three, how many cubic yards of sand has been transferred to the section of beach between Beach Club Villas and Fifty-third Avenue? Would you like to answer the questions now or after?
We'll do that, close.
Thank you. That's it.
Mr. Tisdale, do you have something in writing that you'd like to leave so we can...
No, I was hoping it was from Ms. Tucker, she might want to look at it.
That's fine, that's fine. Thank you, and our next speaker is Carl Harper.
I'm Carl Harper, I'm a permanent resident of Ocean Club. And every day, I look at the Eighteenth Green of the links course on my deck, and I watch golfers, owners of Ocean Club, owners of Wild Dunes, visitors, tourists, all enjoying the Eighteenth Green, all enjoying the golf course. This week, I have watched all of the dunes between the ocean and the golf course wash I have watched salt water coming in onto the fairway, and it's not a pretty sight. I have watched saltwater coming in onto the fairway, and it's not a pretty sight. And I just urge our neighbors to think about the outcome, to think about the result of all of this high waves and rough waters coming in without the benefit of some sand between the golf course and the ocean. So I would like to go on record to say that we agree with the comments of Dave Konowski of Wild Dunes Community Association. We appreciate the fact that the city of Isle of Palms has seriously taken on this beach management project and has been a tremendous help over the last few years. We support the application of the city of Isle of Palms to increase the number of scrapings. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is John Cantrell.
Yes?
Our next speaker is Brad Hodson.
Yes?
Our next speaker is Tony Santiago.
I live at 60 Ocean Point. I have ownership for 19 years and a permanent resident for 14 years. First off, start off, even though I live in Ocean Point, I'm absolutely not against helping out on replenishing the sand, and I would be willing to pay an assessment again if I had to do that. So let me start off that I'm not against helping our neighbors. I do think some facts need to be put on the table that maybe aren't quite as clear as was stated earlier. We were scraped in that part of the beach from September of 2005 until June of 2006. Two pan scrapers, 18 cubic feet each, were scraping at six-hour intervals, not one time a day, usually two times a day, and at the end at night, through the middle of the night. They would scrape up to the dune, and then miraculously, the dune would be gone within a week or two. We had three major dunes over there. They lived by the law. They scraped up to the dune. They knocked another dune down. Guess what they did? They scraped up to the next dune. And what happened? That one went away. For any of you guys who've played at the course, you walk on that little boardwalk there, the boardwalk erosion got so bad, when you walked off that part of that platform, it was five feet deep drop-off. My son and I and Sean, we went and grabbed palmetto trees and built a retaining wall, carrying four, 500-pound trees to reinforce it. The scrapers kept coming. They wouldn't stop. Finally, we were able to get a restraining order and slow them down. What you saw in 2007 was not the result of natural erosion. Those walls, those cliffs were due to scraping. I have those pictures here as well, and you can see what was left. One dune left between the course, and the course, as we all know, is pretty flat. From there, what is the water go? It runs down into the homes. So to say we've got this big buffer doesn't really apply. Please pass those around if you wouldn't mind that. Shows you the cliffs. That was in 2007. You would walk off and sometimes drop down 10, 15 feet. Golfers were at risk even at that point. Now, they talked about natural accretion, that that area of the beach is accreting. When it was replenished, we were supposed to get sand all the way down to the sandbag. That did not happen. In fact, they stopped at 200 yards before that. When I complained, I wrote letters to the city. I actually had a meeting with Mr. Trainer, and Kana came down to speak to me about it, reassuring me that even though there was no reneurization, it was all going to accrete back down that way. I'm not a scientist. I said, okay, maybe I'm an idiot, and it's not going to. I've lived there for 19 years, and I know that part of the beach does not accrete very well, and I explained that to them. But again, I'm not as smart as the scientists are. So I took pictures as well for you to see this phenomenal accretion that occurred from 2007 or '08, when we did the replenishing, to where we are now. You'll see from the fence line, no more than four or five feet at the high tide line, and actually the water line goes behind it, which means from a water level point of view, we have accreted nothing. In fact, the water level is higher if you go from 150 feet from the tee of the 17th towards the 18th. It's higher than it was before. Now, there might be more sand under the water, but when a hurricane comes or a big storm comes, the water level is where it rises from, not from the sand level out 15, 20 feet out. So we have a major risk on that part of the beach. I tried to explain it to these gentlemen. They assured me. I would love to walk it with you again. Look at the same exact spots we did at that point. Bring Mr. Kana, and we can see right from the base of these sand fence posts, the water line is actually behind it now. When we first were out there, it was in front of it. So to say that we've had this tremendous accretion is amazing to me, because I just, as common sense, I don't see it. My fear factor is, I saw what scraping does the first time. It erodes 50, 60, 70 feet in front of the scraping point. You can stop at 400 feet, but as Dr. Young showed you, we have one basic dune protecting that same area of the boardwalk area. Once that breaks through, in fact, the water level has gone behind it already at times on high tides. Once it breaks through there, it's going right to the base of the primary dune. That means you have a primary dune protecting everything from there back then. That's it, one. You can see the erosion from what happened to the cliffs at that time. All it's going to take is one decent storm, and we're going to have a mess there again. Not against borrowing sand. If you guys think that's where it is, that's a crazy place to do it, though. It's dangerous. We're going to end up spending more money having to fix that whole course later on, and the risk to the houses there will be there as well. But if that's what you guys want to do, just know. You've been warned about it. I will walk that level of the beach with anybody who thinks differently. I'll show you where the water lines were. I'll show you the pictures, and you can see what really is going on there, not in a picture over on the ocean, where people are taking sand pictures at certain times, because it's not applicable. I assure you that these are really what's going on two days ago. I am definitely open. Please call me if you want to walk the beach with me. I'm open for ideas. I'd rather replenish in other ways with new sand, and I'd pay for it, and that would be my preference if the city would consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santiago. Our next speaker is Dennis Samuelson.
My name is Dennis Samuelson. I'm not here as a consultant or an attorney. I'm here as a resident. I live at 7 Driftwood Lane. I also own property, a couple oceanfront condos, one at Ocean Point and one at Seagrove. I'm speaking in favor of the modification and the flexibility in the permit. You know, I could complain that I don't want to have sand taken away from my condo in front of Seagrove to put down an Ocean Club, but, you know, the way I look at it is that we're all in this together, and it's a beach for all of us to enjoy, and that I'm going to trust the experts that study this and know a lot more about it than I do. And it just seems that rather than have one more time to take a massive amount of sand, that would be best to give the flexibility to be able to do it in a well-thought-out approach. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Samuelson. Our next speaker is Sean Griffin.
My name is Sean Griffin, and I'm at 19 Ocean Point Drive, and I'm the president of the Ocean Point Homeowners Association. I'm going to be brief, not just only in the interest of time, but all the good stuff's been really said, and I'll just kind of reiterate some things. I think one of the most important things that I want to make perfectly clear is that we're not against the affected area getting more sand. We definitely want that. We think it's vital. I mean, this is the signature hole of Wild Dunes, the resort. I don't care if you're down at Breach Inlet or on Back Bay or Seagrass or wherever you are. I mean, it does nothing but add to your property values. I mean, it's a beautiful resort, and it's a beautiful hole, and we want it to be maintained. We could debate the long-term effects of doing this Band-Aid approach year after year, and maybe the merits of moving the hole a little bit further inland, but I'll save that debate for another day. But I just want to be perfectly clear that we're not against the area getting more sand. What we are against is borrowing sand from Borrow Area B. We've kind of seen this movie before, as you've heard, and it didn't go very well. It might not have been as supervised as we all would have liked, but the ripple effects from that scraping before were not great. I think if you look at the area from the 17th tee box where that groin is to about 200 yards up, the 17th fairway, that area is not really accreting that much sand. There are certain areas, I would agree, that have accreted sand, but that area would not be one of them. So as has been quoted before by Dr. Young, you're kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul here. Also, you have the issue of new vegetation and new natural dune structure that's popping up there at the high tide mark, right at the point. That area would be taken away as well. You also have the issue of the attaching shoal. This could prevent the natural flow of sand up and down the beach, and there's really no guarantee, as we all know. I mean, people, you know, decade after decade, make predictions of what's going to happen, but it's not an exact science. And it's our fear that once the sand is taken like it was before, it's going to take bringing in by humans more sand. We feel that Borrow Area A is a much better location. We believe there's a lot more sand there. And if that's not enough sand, we believe that upland quality sand or sand from offshore should be brought in to help mitigate this situation. Thank you very much.
Our last speaker is Charles Lord.
I live at Ocean Point, and I certainly would like to, I mean, Ocean Club, and I certainly would like to thank the Ocean Point folks who have spoken. Mr. Santiago, I couldn't agree with you more. We want whatever works. I think we have to have these folks who know a whole lot more about sand than I certainly do make the decision about where the sand is taken. I'm interested to hear Mr. Young and the lawyer from the Environmental Law Project. Mr. Young very famously spoke against the reneurization in 2008 and in favor of retreat. He's a member of the Blue Ribbon Panel, and therefore he knows what their recommendation was on February 5th of this year to DEHEC. Their first recommendation was, recommendation one, replace language regarding the policy of retreat with the following: "The policy of the state of South Carolina is the preservation of its coastal beachfront and beach dune system." The gentleman from the Environmental Law Project talked about the city of Isle of Palms and said that they should be willing to pay to truck sand in. He thought that was right. He should perhaps talk with Dr. Young, who famously was quoted on NBC News a month ago about Hurricane Sandy, saying that the problem with reneurization and with not retreating is that the rich people get a free ride. I would submit to Dr. Young that he really hasn't spent much time in Wildwood, New Jersey. If he thinks the New Jersey shore is about all rich people, it's not. It would be tragic were we to lose the 18th hole or the 17th hole. Had we listened to Dr. Young and his policy of retreat, we would no longer have Building One at Ocean Club. We might not have Building Four at Ocean Club, and we would have lost significant other properties. Fortunately, DEHEC and other permitting authorities listened to the Lucas decision, and reason prevailed. I hope it does in this instant. I hope that you will grant the permit, as the city has asked for it, and that then we will trust the people who have done a pretty good job so far to do a pretty good job going forward. Knowing that, at some point, we will have to reneurize the beach. We have that in prospect, and that's part of the city's plan. But thank the folks from Ocean Point, and certainly we should be sensitive to their issues about scraping.
Thank you for your comments. That's everyone signed up to speak. I want to take a moment to correct an oversight. We have one other DEHEC employee who is here. That is Barbara Neal, an important part of our team. There she is. The record of this public here will be kept open until March 27, 2013, so please, any additional written comments by that date. Thank you for all your comments, and everyone have a good night. Thank you.[1677.21]